Let's call our meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next we'll do the Planning Commission report, and I believe Pam is here tonight to do the report from the Planning Commission.
It's yours?
Good evening. Well, it looks like it's all nice and spelled out on the agenda here, so it's good. So we're gonna, we appointed Ron to be our chair, and it was a unanimous vote, and so I think we need a motion for that, correct?
That's correct, for the city council to approve the appointment.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Hanegraff as chairman of the Planning Commission?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'd like to discuss it.
Discussion?
Discussion. There's nothing against Ron, I don't know Ron. I've met him three times. I've met him one time, he's been to the meetings quite a few times here. I think we should have somebody with more experience as head of the Planning Commission. That's... He's what? I haven't seen him.
It was some time ago, it was 15 years ago, 20 years ago?
Things has changed.
Things have changed. I agree with Danny, I think we should have somebody more experienced on it also.
No?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'll say aye. So on a three to two vote, Ron is the chairman for one year. The next issue was Met Council letter?
Yeah, we chatted about that a little bit, Elizabeth had brought us up to speed in some of its clerical and some of its policy, and we kind of, we kinda let her, well, we kinda handed that over to, what was her name again? Merritt. Merritt was making some comments on it, but we didn't really discuss much on it, other than its clerical and policy. If you had anything to add, Elizabeth?
In your agenda packet, on pages two and three, there's a letter from Met Council, and in that letter, it explains to the city that the submission of our 2040 plan was deemed incomplete. And by that, it just means that there are certain sections that they felt we need a little fine tuning, or perhaps, you know, a rewrite. I would say about 80% of the plan is really technical in nature, meaning that a chart has to be updated, or a map has to be updated, things that Hyla is well able to do. And while 20% is policy-driven, and will need to either have workshop or further discussion on, I think overall, it's a 20, or I'm sorry, a 20/80 mix of technical versus policy. I've asked Hyla to draft a response to the incomplete letter, and that's what you have on page seven. And on page seven, she indicates, you know, what she feels will address the incompleteness at both sections. And at the end, she's indicated that she made a recommendation, and her recommendation was that we accept some of the recommendations that she had. And while I think it's prudent to have her work on the 80% of the technical, I do think that the policy questions do need to be addressed by the council. So whether you feel that tonight you just want to accept the letter, and you want a workshop format to work on the policy, or whether you want Hyla to work on the technical while we work on the policy, that's really at your discretion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I will say that we've heard from a number of other communities that the council is being very prescriptive this time around in terms of their comments, and so these letters are going out to cities all across the metropolitan area. So although we'd like to think we're special, we're just one of many receiving a very detailed commentary from the Met Council.
Do we know why that is? Why the change?
That's a good question. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, we don't know why the change, we just know that it is happening because some of the folks that we're working with are working with other communities as well, and so, and these, we're kind of on the early round of reviews, and so they're coming in, you know, pretty steadily now, but just, I thought I'd put that in context for you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, I have a question. If we go ahead and accept the letter, and then direct Hyla to start working on her 80% of corrections, and at their next afternoon meeting, spend a couple hours discussing this, how long do we have until the solistic be done, back together and presented again?
You know, when I talked to Hyla, she indicated to me that there was not a timeframe, so the Met Council indicates that they give us an incomplete letter, and until, and until we complete the task at hand, they don't move forward with the process. But the letter does not indicate that it has to be back in 30 days or 60 days, as far as a timeframe. In our case, if you look at page eight, looking at bullet, or numbers four and five, this is where I think we have the most work to do. Because under her bullet, she literally writes, she goes, I mean, it's a full section that we have to rewrite. It says rewrite overlay and mixed-use references to clarify all that are mixed-use, and it goes on to talk about the proposed mixes of that. So I do think that that will take a little time, so I think in the direction, we will need to take on a couple of hours. Whether you do that with a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, or at a workshop meeting, is really your choice, and whatever meeting you designate that to, then we'll invite the Planning Commission members, so they can hear your discussion.
Do we have time at the next workshop to make this a priority?
Your next workshop is March 6th, and I've had requests from two developers, and these developers have, one has a subdivision and one has a concept, and they want to have some one-on-one time, talking through the concept, and the other one wants to talk through his phase development plan. Your workshops are from four to six, so depending on whether you want to set timeframes with a developer, in other words, whether you want me to tell them they only have 30 minutes, you know, I'm not sure how you want to work your workshops when it comes to the developers that come in. That will dictate how much you can put on that agenda.
If we gave them each 30 minutes, so that's one hour, we have an hour left, and we might go a little longer, so we could at least start unwrapping what we have to discuss, and everybody could go home and think about it, and either have another meeting or at the next workshop, or the next council meeting, spend some real time hashing through it. Does that sound, it'll take more than one, just two hours, I would think.
I think rewriting the overlay district is going to take a lot more than one hour of discussion. Not, I mean, I'm not going to the extremes either, but I think it's going to be a couple of hours to talk through, and then give the Planning Commission direction, if there's areas that you want to research.
Anybody else have ideas?
I mean, we could make the workshop longer. Is half hour too short for the developers? I mean, do you feel like they're going to get what they need, if they're limited to 30 minutes?
It should, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, it should be sufficient based upon the meetings we've had at staff level. They want to tell you where they are in their projects, and get feedback from you on kind of direction, so I would think 30 minutes would do it, but that's obviously your discretion to go longer if you want.
I would say the only thing that I would have reservation is, I do think you need Hyla, when you talk about the comp plan, I do think you need Hyla present, so that she can give you feedback, and she's getting firsthand what you're discussing. And although she said to me that the incomplete letter, that she would not charge, you know, she would not charge us for the work, I'm not sure how many times you want her to come back for a discussion. So maybe the first one is good for an hour, and then we can set up a schedule with her, so we know when, her availability, and she knows what her timeframe is.
I think that's a good idea, the first hour would just be an introduction from you to everybody who's new here, on what the questions are, what the choices are, then we can talk about it and think about it, and maybe at the next meeting have her, or whenever she's available, for the full time, and really get into the meat of it. Anybody have any problems with that? So then what we need is, how do we do direction, Consular? We don't need a motion, or we do?
Mr. Mayor and Members, I think there's a recommendation on page 13, that you could use it in the form of a motion.
So would somebody make the motion, please?
Make motion to accept changes as proposed above, and work with consultant team to draft and submit a letter to Metropolitan Council. Our next Planning Commission, our next workshop, our next workshop.
March 6th.
And the only thing I would add to that, is that you want her to just do the technical, you want Hyla to work on the technical, but the policy issues will, you still want to reserve your policy issues.
Yes.
And if I may, one additional comment, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, everything will come back to you to send over to the Met Council ultimately, as a revised draft.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Going back to Chairperson, we also discussed and voted on rotating vice-chair. I forgot to tell you that earlier, so, and that passed, so we'll rotate the chair position. And then, I don't know if Elizabeth had said, but Hyla was going to send a letter to saying that we're working on things, to Met Council. And then Elizabeth was kind enough to put a proposed worksheet for residential zone businesses in our packet last week, and it's a nice kind of guideline for anybody who comes to the counter, because what she was indicating before was there's like three questions, and so this will be really good, we think, for helping people move through and finding out what the roadblocks will be, and saving staff a little bit of headache with the back and forth. I think she has, if she has anything to add on that, but it was, we liked it, we thought it was a good idea.
You know, as another tool for property owners and/or business owners who are applying for residential zone business, it appeared that there was some confusion as to how much information or what kind of answers we wanted to see in the application process. Although we had a laundry list of things that we required, I think the applicants weren't looking at as they had to answer questions, they, I think they were answering them in their minds, just saying, yep, that's good, yep, that's good, and then just giving us one-word answers, which is great, if you know a whole lot about the property and/or the business, but for the most part, people who are reviewing it don't really know a whole lot about it. So the worksheet kind of forces the applicant to write the answers out. And so what Merritt did was, she took the statements, made them into questions, and we think it would be an easier tool for applicants. And also, I think will be a good tool for the Planning Commission members, because it will prompt maybe other questions they may have, based on the information that's on or in the application. So what I've asked the Planning Commission members to do, because we have two applications for residential zone businesses on the February 20th meeting, was to use that checklist when they're looking at the application and the planning report, to see if we're missing any questions or information that we think we need in order to make a great decision. So they all decided that it was a good idea, and they're going to come back, and we'll get a little bit more feedback on that checklist. And then the council member, or Mayor and Council will be able to do that for the following meeting, which is on the 27th. And then everyone can give us feedback if we need to tweak it.
So I would ask everybody to please read it through a few times, talk it over, think about it, and when we use it once or twice, then we can have Elizabeth add or subtract from it as we need it. Does anybody else have anything to add on that? Then, the next thing would be our page 18 to 21, Planning Commission Training Classes.
This information was provided for the Planning Commission for anybody who wants to take these classes again, or has not taken them. And Ron has indicated to me that he would be interested in taking these classes, if that would be something that we could bring before you here.
So Elizabeth, how do they do that? The city pays for it, correct?
The city pays for training, and, but at the, at the discretion of the council. So it's up to the council whether that's something that they want to have open to the Planning Commission members. So in the past, we've brought it to the council, and the council's then voted indicating to the Planning Commission that they're able to take the training classes, and that we would pay for them.
And how do they go about doing it? They just sign up and bring you a receipt, or they pay for it, and then you reimburse them, or what?
There's two ways of doing it. We can register them, if someone doesn't want to lay out the money, they can, we can register for them, or you can go online, register, and I'm pretty sure there's a box that sends an invoice, and if you send the invoice to us, we will pay it.
Okay.
And I know that's for League of Minnesota Cities, this is through GTS, and so many things have changed now electronically. I'm not sure whether there's a box to do that, but we can do it either way, through reimbursement, or we can register and pay for it through the city.
So would someone make a motion that?
Make a motion to approve Ron's classes that he wants to take? The three, four, how many, tell me what he was looking at?
I just think that's different options of classes, there are different times, and maybe if I could ask that we would just make the motion that anybody on the Planning Commission that is interested in taking these classes, I just haven't looked at my schedule yet.
Yeah, motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And is there discussion?
I just have a question, is there a budget line that you need to kind of keep an eye on, Elizabeth, on this, or?
There is not a budget line here, so this is just, this would just be out of reserves.
Okay.
Anything else, anyone? Let's call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the last item there is, we need a motion, and Elizabeth will explain, to combine a preliminary and final plat process, 9252 Lake Drive, pages 22 and 23.
What you have before you is a letter from an applicant for a subdivision application, and they've given you a sample of their subdivision, and I'm sorry for those in your audience, I'm having a technical problem that, for whatever reason, I'm not able to bring, it doesn't want to bring up the agenda. So I apologize on that. I will bring up the overhead just as soon as I'm finished. This is the only copy I have that I need to put on the overhead. Okay, so there's a, what you have before you is a letter from Wilkinson Hegna, which is a group that's representing 9252 Lake Drive, and I understand the applicant is, or the property owner is in the audience tonight. And what they're requesting is a combination of the preliminary and final plat process. And in order to do that, they need to get a waiver from the council, because the code requires that you go through two different processes, which is a preliminary plat process and a final plat process. In the past, we have waived that requirement and combined them. And one of the reasons why you would do that is, if you have a simple amendment or a lot combination, and it's already been platted once, and you're going to plat it again, most of the requirements have been fulfilled, and so you waive out a lot of the requirements, and you combine the process, and it's not as expensive as if you would have to go through two. This is not that case. In this case, they're simply asking to combine the process, it's only one new lot, so I am recommending approval in that. And this isn't, the reason I'm recommending it is, I think they will still have to fulfill all the rest of the requirements, so this is not one where we're waving out requirements, because this one will have some nuances to it that will make it different than others. This is a subdivision in the commercial district on Lake Drive, and so there's utilities and some other things that we will work through on this particular subdivision. So with that, my recommendation is to grant this waiver to combine the preliminary and final plat process.
Can you put that up so everyone can see?
Yes.
Sorry, I have an extra one if you need that.
So the subdivision is on Lake, is on Lake Drive, and it's a 10-acre, a 10-acre lot. And Carl, is this two and a half acres and seven acres? What's the subdivision for acreage?
10.4 acres, or 7.4, so we're leaving three.
Okay. So two-lot subdivision, 10-point, just over 10 acres in the subdivision, 7.4 acres and the remainder in the other lot, which will have the house and accessory building on it.
That'll be the three-acre lot.
That will be the three-acre lot.
And so what you're proposing is, instead of doing your first, and then the second, and, the preliminary, and the second, the final plat, one and then the other, you're going to put them both together?
Correct, and so what the applicant will do is, he will file an application, and that application will say final and preliminary plat.
Yeah.
Or actually, it'll say preliminary and final plat, because you do have to do preliminary before final. And he will have to fulfill all of requirements for both, but it'll only be one hearing, and it only becomes before the council one time. So we're not waving out any of the requirements, because again, this, this particular request is not, it's a brand-new subdivision, so they'll need to meet all of the requirements, they just don't want to come through with two applications.
Does everyone understand what we're trying to accomplish? Would someone please make the motion then?
Make a motion to combine, to allow, to be combined preliminary and final plat application for one hearing?
Put the address in.
16, no, it's our address. Oh, 9252 Lake Drive, Northeast.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on it? If not, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's it?
Yep.
Thank you.
All I got, thank you.
And now we're down to number eight, Public Open Forum. Is anyone here who would like to speak at the Public Open Forum? If not, we'll move on to number nine, which is Coon Creek Watershed District Appointment Information in our packets, it's pages 24 to 27.
In your agenda packet, you received a letter from Jerry Soma, who is the city, or the county administrator, indicating that there are two vacancies for the Coon Creek Watershed District. I'm going to give you a little bit of background, you know, why you received this letter, and what the process is. The county board has the jurisdiction over appointing watershed board members, and in this particular case, there are two appointments that are, that are up, or have reached the conclusion of their term. Each city that is in a watershed district has an opportunity to bring forth three nominations. If a city brings forth three nominations, the county board must pick from that list in order to appoint to the Coon Creek Watershed District. One of the requirements to be, to being on the Coon Creek Watershed District is you have to live in the district. And so, in this particular case, if we were to get a list of three nominees, they would have to live within Coon Creek Watershed District boundaries in order to serve on that board. With that, I did call Jerry Soma, because my question to him was, and I hadn't had this opportunity to ask the question in the past, which was, if a city does not submit three nominations, where do they get their list from? I mean, how do they get a pool? And his answer to me was, they advertise, and so they always have a list of people who either want to be on, or who want to be reappointed. In this particular case, both persons who are up for reappointment have already filed for reappointment. And he said in the past, they have been given, I won't say priority, but you know what I mean, they, because of their experience and being on the board, you know, they deter, you know, to that. So, in this particular case, they do have both for reappointments, but again, this ad is still out, and so they do have others that have applied for it. But if we did have a list, they would take from that list. We've never had, we've never had a list of three, we've advertised, in all my years here, we've never had three people put on a list for Coon Creek. It's a very small area in our community.
So since we don't have anyone, is it a big issue to Columbus to not have representation on there?
You know, it's always good to have representation on it, and I don't know how many communities are in Coon Creek, but I understand it's quite large watershed district outside, you know, as far as other jurisdictions. But it's always nice to have representation from your own community on a board, if you've got particular issues. Again, looking at Coon Creek, it's the very westerly, southerly portion of Columbus, and then there's a very small area up to Broadway that kind of hugs Carlos Avery, that Coon Creek is in, so we don't have a whole lot of applications. I'm going through that watershed district, so we don't have a big presence.
And are you advertising now, anywhere?
At your direction, we will, we'll put it on the website and such, I don't know if Jesse already has it up there. She doesn't.
All right. So would someone make a motion? No, this is just informational, correct?
This is just informational, but we can, we can put it on the website, so people know that there's an opening. And if they live in Coon Creek, then they can apply if they choose.
Maybe The Times will put something in, or we have a reporter from there.
Do you need a motion for direction, or just?
I think Jesse has it, we're good.
You're good? All right. And now we're on to number 10, which is an addition on our, excuse me, an addition on our agenda, and this is the Rice Creek Trail Association request for a permanent trail alignment. And we met these gentlemen before, and now they're back for business.
Good evening, I'm Bill Princeton, President of the Rice Creek Trail Association, and we're trying to do a reroute due to the prior installation of the roundabout that ate up our trail. And, let's see your name.
I'm John Bout, from Lexington, Minnesota, belong to Rice Creek Trail Association.
So when we were here last time, we discussed the situation of the trail realignment and reroute, and what we were looking for from the council was approval to run about 400 feet on the east side of Zurich, to a point where east side of Zurich to a point where we would stop and cross over the thing and then follow the power line through the area of the... That the power line goes, the easement of the power line. And we have approval from all of the people in Anoka County and all the people that would be affected where the trail goes through. We have permission from them to run on their properties.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, the reason you didn't take action last meeting is they came to you as part of the open forum. And so now it's on the agenda. And if you've had a chance to look at it over the interim, it would be up to you whether you want to approve the change.
Yes, okay. Elizabeth, would you point up on the thing, please? So one of the issues we talked about was crossing over the sidewalks.
Yep.
But you covered that with heavy-duty mats, you said?
Yep.
So there's not damage to it. Jim, you had said that you... They do work? Yep. So that's not an issue. If everybody look on the maps, you'll see 23 up on the very top. Then you're coming down Zurich Street. Yep. And then they cross the street down...
Not such a good overhead for that particular one.
And then go out into the Big Swamp. I have a question that's not completely related, but so the people going west on Lake Drive, they're coming in on the south side, cross the sidewalk and come down. When they go back, they go on the north side?
Right. And they would cross over at the light?
Yep.
And pick up the existing trail going west?
West.
Yep.
Elizabeth's coloring.
I'm telling you, technical difficulties. You have to reserve the crayons because then you can't see the trail. I believe what the Rice Creek Trail Association is asking for is looking to relocate their trail to the east side of Zurich Street and then crossing over the road into the trail that they already have permission from other property owners to use. I think at our last council meeting, we talked a little bit about they were going to put some mats out over the sidewalks in order to do that transition while crossing the street. And my understanding from Public Works is that the Public Works superintendent does not have any objections to the trail being along Zurich on this side or doing the street crossing.
May we have a motion from someone? To approve the Rice Creek Trail Association request for a permanent trail alignment?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second for discussion. Can you go in? What's preventing you from going in further west into the swampy area? Stay off the sidewalk and the roads altogether and cut through there? Is there something that prevents you from?
It's a lot wetter. And you get into part of that over there that is Columbus Lake Conservation Area. And then you can see the creek is running through there. And so that's a pretty wet land over there.
Okay, then there's no high ground?
Not that we can see. And we've been told we cannot run in that conservation area. And at that point, you would have to cross over that creek a couple of times, which is not possible.
I would think snowmobilers waiting at this light will just go down the sidewalk instead of cut across and come back and come across again. I think that might be a problem. I don't know if it is or not. We'd have to wait and see. Monitor it.
We have this situation over in Circle Pines where we cross over Lake Drive at a light in both directions. And we've never had a problem for 35 years, so.
And you put signs up, correct?
Yes.
Or, you know, directing them across and then back down?
Yep. We have lots of signings we put up as at any intersection.
Mr. Mayor and Council, one thing that I'd depend whether you approve this or not, it's written as a permanent trail alignment. I would think that, given the change, given that it's crossing the street, you'd want the ability to look at, you know, next season, whether it worked this season. And so maybe we can strike that word permanent and indicate within the motion that it would be reviewed after the season's over to make sure there wasn't damage to the streets or problems crossing the road. I just don't want you to give up your discretion over the streets if there's any kind of issue.
Well, it's permanent from the standpoint that every year we don't have to move this trail again. That's what we mean. But in our permit that we would give to landowners or to you to sign says that you have the right to review it. And if you're going to change it or deny it, you need to give us six months' notice so we have time to do something. Whereas in this situation, we had one month.
Understood. I think it'd still be part of the motion if the council agrees to do that review between seasons.
We have no problem with that.
Actually, it would have been really helpful to have that document so you can kind of see what the terms are that we're agreeing to.
Agreed.
Why don't we put it up on the overhead?
Oh, okay.
That way the whole council can take a look at it.
So starting at the top, it says this permit is granted to...
We have to move it down a little.
Slide it down just a little bit, please. This permit is granted to Anoka County by Columbus Township. The landlord's...
City of Columbus, please.
What?
We're a city, we're not a township anymore.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Anyway, to the landowners, to Anoka County Parks, who is our sponsor to the DNR, to maintain the Rice Creek-Snowanville Trail. And that Columbus City, record owners and stuff, is in consideration of $0 grants this permit over and upon the following premises situated in the county of Anoka. And then we put the land description there. And it says this permit shall be continuous and will terminate upon sale of the land or upon notification in writing to the sponsor six months prior determination by the landowners. The right-of-way shall be open to the general public for snowmobile use. The sponsor shall at all times have the right to enter upon said right-of-way or for the purpose necessary to perform lawful powers or duties. The landowner shall have the right to close the said right-of-way in any emergency with the approval of the sponsor. The permit is for 16-foot width over the route. And our club has a million and a half dollar policy that you already have a copy of from the last time we did reroute up the sidewalk thing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, because this is a blank form, I think the motion would also be subject to our review of the completed form at a staff level if you're comfortable with that.
So what would be the sentence we would insert that would allow us to review this and then maybe grant the permanent or the on-continuous approval after one year?
Mr. Mayor and Council member, we would do that... You would do that as a council as part of your approving motion?
Mm-hmm.
And then we can add that to the document in its final form.
That was in the motion, correct? That was added to the motion?
Yeah. Maybe if you'd like, we can state a motion and see if it's acceptable to the council. The motion would be to approve the request of the Rice Creek Trail Association for trail alignment, including the work on the permit to review a completed form. And the motion would be subject to review between the snowmobile seasons, if that's not too general, for any damage or any concerns raised by either Public Works, staff or council.
And the snowmobile season runs from December 1st to March 31st.
I have no problem with that. But we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes, you do.
So does that have to...
The...
Do we just add this to it or do we?
Correct. The maker of the motion would either agree to that change or withdraw and start over. So...
Who made the motion?
You did.
I agreed to the change.
And then the seconder would have to agree and then you'd be in, ready to go. Janet.
No, it wasn't you.
All that's ready for discussion. I remember now. I agree to it.
Okay.
All right. And so it's been moved and seconded. Is there more discussion? How does this seem to you guys?
Seems fine.
Workable?
Yep.
Anyone else have anything more? If not, let's call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And it passes.
Okay. I will get this completed form back to you in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
And we thank you very much.
And we have plenty of snow.
It's all working this here.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think the simplest way to do the additional condition is to have our minutes taker write that up and we'll attach it to the form. So it's exactly as you approved.
Okay. Now we're at letter D. We're on to the staff and consultant reports. And we'll start with the engineer report on number 11.
Yes, good evening. I have two different projects to discuss tonight. The first one is the Southwest Area Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Improvements, Phase Two. And in your packet, you should have a memo and some bid tabulations. So we opened bids last week, Wednesday. We had eight contractors bid on the project, which was a nice turnout.
We're on page 28, everybody.
There's a summary on the memo of the bids that were received. They ranged, in general, they ranged from $700,000 to $900,000. There was one outlier at about $1.4 million. And our engineer's estimate was about the same as the lower bid. Don't want to be the low bid as the estimate. We want to be in the middle, but it was pretty close. I think you have all the details too of all the bid tabulations, but what we're looking for is a motion to receive all the bids and a motion to award the contract to Veit and Company, the lowest responsible bidder, in an amount for $699,011.16. After that, if approved, we would then schedule a preconstruction meeting and get the contractor scheduled in.
And when would this to start and be finished?
Hopefully. Start as soon as probably road restrictions are off, so April-ish, April, May, and be done by June, July.
All right. Would someone please make a motion to receive the bids for the Southwest Area Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Improvements?
Second.
And a second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? I know we've discussed this a little bit before, but anyone have anything more? I have a question for you, Dennis, on this issue. So it's quite a spread from 700,000 to 14.
Yeah. I said that 1.4 is kind of an outlier. You know, the other seven, I range from 700 to 900. That's not too bad.
So you think they just didn't want it? So they add an extra zero or what?
I'm not 100% sure where they're located actually either. Sometimes contractors will just throw out a big number hoping they're the only bid or something like that.
All right. Anybody else have anything? If not, it's been moved and seconded, so let's call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. So this was the motion to receive the bids. And now we need another motion to award the contract to Veit and Company for the Southwest Area Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Improvements, Phase Two, for $699,011.16.
Make a motion to approve the bid of $699,000. $699,000?
$11.
$11.
$16.
Veit and Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? I have one question. Is it Veit, Vet or Veet?
Veit.
Veit. All right, everybody, we learned tonight. We'll be seeing them down there.
Have you ever worked with them before?
Yeah, not in this area, but they're a good contractor.
They're one of the largest woman-owned businesses in this area doing this work.
All right, let's call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. So the motion carries.
That's the first two bullet points. The next one was for the 2019 street improvements, which is the reclamation of pavement for Notre Dame, north of Broadway and 181st, from Broadway to Kettle River Boulevard. And I didn't put plans, inspection in your packet. It's a lot of documents, but it's... The plans are, we keep them fairly simple. It's just an aerial view of where the improvements are going and the limits of the pavement. Part of that, we'll be doing driveway aprons at all the driveways, mailbox replacements. And there's one culvert on 181st Street that we'll be upgrading from corrugated metal to concrete. So what I'm looking for tonight is to approve the plans and specs in one motion. And the second motion can be to authorize advertising for bids and to set the bid opening for 3:30 PM on Wednesday, March 6th at City Hall.
What were the estimates on it, Dennis?
We... That'll be, we'll open the bids then on March 6th and get the...
What were the estimates?
The engineer's estimate is around $550,000 for the improvements, construction and plus engineering and inspection.
Plus engineering?
And we make two separate motions?
That's the way we have it laid out, yes.
Yep.
Okay. So would someone please make a motion for number one, to approve the plans and specifications for the 2019 Street Improvements Project?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on that topic?
We've talked about doing this for a year or two and I go down Notre Dame all the time. I don't think it needs it. I just, I think you go another five years at least, 10 years, five to 10 years. 181st is bad. I mean, I live right there. 181st is bad, but the prices we're talking about here, I think is just too much to do. That's just my opinion.
Anyone else?
Can we just... Could we call on staff to just respond to that? Because you have this on a schedule, is that correct, JW? Do you want to educate us a little?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think you should have people come to the mic. It helps for making the record.
Yeah.
Do I need to state my name?
And address.
And address. 16319 Kettle River Boulevard. I gotta think here. In 2015, we redid Notre Dame from Kettle River to Broadway. The project was actually supposed to be from Kettle River to Broadway and then Broadway to 181st and 181st to Kettle River. But because we had the Johns Black Dirt project, we decided that we were not going to do that northernly section until we were done. So with that being said, we pushed it off for five years-ish and now it's a 2019 project. So the plan was actually 2015, we moved it to 2019. So that's kind of where we're at. It's so it's been on the schedule for a handful of years and that's why we pushed it to where we're at. Pardon me?
How do you determine if it needs it or not? I mean, it's a fairly... I mean, two parts of Notre Dame are totally different. One's got all the traffic, one doesn't have much, just residential traffic. The other one's got schools, buses, it's got everything down. Shortcut to the City Hall or whatever.
I mean, we go by the age. I mean, we go by the age. And, you know, the whole plan that we operate off of is the, you know, 30 years of road. Every six years, we do seal code. You know, we crack fill accordingly. So we follow a plan. Some roads are way worse than others, but it's, I mean, we're following the plan.
More sense of follow the road conditions than the plan? I mean, if it's not that bad, not much traffic, you'd push it on.
Well, I mean, we do do that. So I mean, there are roads that are at plan that we don't do, but, I mean, 181st and Notre Dame is what we call the main road. It's a trunk roadway, so it feeds off to different developments, and they do carry more traffic than other roads. And 181st is worse than Notre Dame. But at the end of the day, the Notre Dame is starting to come apart, and so we do 181st this year, and then in three years, we pay how much more money to do, I don't even know how long Notre Dame is, a half a mile. So, I mean, it's a cost thing at that point, too.
Would it be fair to say if you didn't do Notre Dame, you'd have to do some other maintenance to it?
Oh, yeah, it needs maintenance. It's a shoulder...
Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
But as a stopgap for a while?
So I mean, the... We have a very good maintenance policy here, and we follow it. And our roads are in good shape. So if you drive to Hugo, Wyoming, Lionel Lakes, Forest Lake, the roads are nowhere near the condition that ours are, because we maintain them. So, I mean, roads that we potentially are repairing are better than roads in neighboring communities, hands down.
Very expensive.
It absolutely is. I mean, it costs a lot of money to maintain infrastructure, there's no doubt.
So I have a question. If you defer something like this, and say in two years, it becomes a crumbling mess, then how long does it take from that point to be able to go through the process to get it on the schedule? Because that's also something to consider, I'm assuming, is that if you stick to a maintenance schedule, you're ideally avoiding that kind of problem, and the inconvenience and the safety issues that that might present.
There is more to it than that, but, I mean, you know, if we decided in two years that the thing was crumbling, you know, then you're going to go through the, you know, engineering again and do the cost, but now we're going to be paving a half a mile section instead of almost two miles. So your cost per mile is going to go up considerably at that point as well. So, I mean, if you decided that you were going to do it in two years, then... You know, I don't, I mean, it takes three, four, or five months to get a project going?
In the past, we've always tried to consolidate projects so that we did not do... I mean, there's a lot of steps to it, a lot of plans, specs, engineering. You're going to have to pay all of those costs again. So we have tried to pare it up projects to be cost-effective, so we didn't have to do those sorts of things. And we have always been told that the larger the project, the better the bids come in for dollar figures. So I think the Public Works Advisory Group, along with Jim, have come up with a plan so that we are looking at those factors along the way. And I guess we're kind of at extremes. If you look at Hornsby Street at year 48, that's the extreme. So that's what you don't want to face. And I realize that there's a nuance to, you know, where's the right year based on conditions and where. And as Jim, we're using our best knowledge of, based on what we know today. But again, we wouldn't want to push it out so that we had 48-year-old roads that now is an entire rebuild, which, as you all are aware, is coming at a very large price tag.
There's different levels of improvements as well to the lifecycle of the street. You know, you start with maybe a seal coat once or twice, then you get to a mill and overlay. These streets, we're saying, are reclaim, where you grind up the pavement and some of their gravel, and use that as the base. I don't know how long, if you waited a number of years more, you're probably looking at full reconstruction, which would cost a little bit more, because you'd be taking out more material. But that might be five or 10 years down the road. So at this stage, it's kind of an intermediate fix, because the road isn't horrible, but it still needs repair.
So once this is done, how many years is it good for?
It's basically a new roadway, so...
Basically, we will do, so once the road is paved, at year six, it will get seal-coated, or at that year, so it might be seven or whatever, but at that year, we'll do the seal coating, crack filling, of course, maintenance along the way. And then the plan is 30 years, so we won't ultimately do anything for 30 years other than the proposed maintenance of seal coating and crack filling. Unless, of course, you know, it breaks down faster, or, you know, whatever, then you might relook at it differently. I mean, if you look at Zurich Street, Zurich Street will no way make 30 years. So that road will have, we will have to do something on that road well before 30 years. So, I mean, some last longer, some last less, but, you know, that's the general average that we try to work with anyways.
So Elizabeth, would you please explain to address Jeff's issue of spending big chunks of money? And we're all concerned about it. Where does money come from? And we know where it goes, but...
In this particular case, we have a capital improvement plan, our CIP plan for blacktop. That schedule is a 25-year schedule, and where we look at age of roads and we project out, in each year, we look at the roads in a five-year increment, and then it's updated. So we have a 25-year plan in order to schedule dollars, so there's not a whole lot of spiking going on. It's normalized over 25 years. But we look more closely at five years to make sure that we're looking at roads. And as Jim said, you know, sometimes roads that we think are going to be five years out or 10 years out, they look at the condition, and for whatever reason, it's potholy, or it comes before it's due. And those become a priority, and you move those around. Others, like we've pushed off this one for three years because of other things that were going on within the neighborhood. So there is that ability to move around the capital improvement plan to adjust, and it's fluid enough each year to do that. However, the dollar figure is based on miles of blacktop and what it costs in that given year to maintain blacktop, and there's an escalator in it. So there's dollars put away, and whether or not it's used for one project or another, we're able to adjust to. So this is a cash system. We don't borrow money for road maintenance.
And can you, if this was not passed tonight, what would be the investment that's been made so far that you'd have to repeat if we push this down the road? The engineering?
We'd have the plans done, with just some of the re-advertising and going through that process.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I can't, off the top of my head, I, this is not one that I've tracked, so I can't say, oh, we spent $5,000, or we spent $10,000. That, I wouldn't be able to quantify that at this point, because I'm not sure how far along we are.
But you've been planning on doing it, Dennis and Jim, and Elizabeth, for 10 years, or however long, knowing that this was the time to do it.
It's been on the radar for a handful of years, yes.
And I understand it's a lot of money, and I understand maybe you could get by a year or two. But you've already done the work. It's already in the schedule. It's already been pushed back. And once it's done, you'd never have to think about it. Well, any of us are still alive, so that's the upside. And I understand it's a lot of money, but the money is there, correct?
Correct.
It is there, yes.
Because it's there, it doesn't mean you have to spend it. It's one of the problems with government.
Well...
Why do you have to spend it? Just wanted to say that.
I agree. I know, and I agree. However, if you don't do it this year, you'll do it in two years or five years, and it'll cost whatever the increases are. And I don't want to feel that we, the professionals, have been working on the project, doing the work, doing the calculations, watching the roads. And it's been in the mill. I'm not against anything coming up. Take your chisel, and we'll go out there and see if it really needs to be fixed or not, but I don't feel qualified to vote against the professional people who are supposed to know what they're doing. Anyone else have opinions? It's just an opinion. Shelley?
Well, I feel like I needed to be in earlier on this process, because I don't like being halfway down the road and then, you know, switching horses, you know, midstream. Going forward, I guess I would like to be, like, more in tune with which roads are going to be, you know, fixed. And the only reason I'm saying this is because we have some really large number items coming up that I keep looking, I've said this over and over again. We have 1,400 households. We do have some businesses. That's great. But we have 3,914 people, and, you know, this is a lot to, you know, swallow when you're, you know, looking at 700,000, and then we're looking at 2.2 million on Hornsby, and that type of thing. So I would be saying, okay, this is in the works, and I understand, you know, and I didn't understand the process before. I would go along with this right now, but going forward, I would like to be a little more informed and say, okay, can we push it off one more year, or, you know, not go necessarily with a, you know, it's on the schedule, so we have to do it, and that type of thing. Because I agree with you.
No, I...
Danny, what can you add?
Should be done. It's scheduled to be done. It should be done. The road needs it. We can put it off, and we all can drive on roads like the city of Wyoming does, you know? We got the money set away for it, and if the road needs to be done, it should be done.
So let's call for a vote on the requested action number one, to approve the plans and specifications for the 2019 street improvements project.
We need a motion, right?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second.
We do. All right, well then, let's call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
I didn't aye.
So it's four aye and one nay. And it passes. So then number two, we'll need another motion for the requested action to authorize the advertisement for bids. Set the bid opening for 3 PM on Wednesday, March 6, 2019, at the City Hall. The council will then consider the bids at their March 13, 2019 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? And let's call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. So again, we have four ayes and one nay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I had one other item that wasn't on here, but it was an update from two meetings ago. This is regarding that site distance issue at Hornsby and 97. And at that time, you and Danny, council member, were going to take a look at it, and you did. I just wanted to let you know that I've kind of run my course up the chain at MINDOT, and they're, still have the position that they went out, they had a number of people go out and look at it, and felt that it was acceptable as it is. So I just wanted to come back to you and say, you probably have two options. Let it go the way it is, and they should be out there with construction again in two or three months. Or make it more formal, and write a letter or something to a higher level. But I don't, personally, I don't see it changing.
Thank you.
So if you're okay with it as it is, then I'll, I can get back to the MINDOT Design/Build Project Manager. Or if you prefer other avenues, let us know.
You tell them we're not happy with it, but we accept it.
Can definitely do that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't think the city would accept it, per se, because it's MINDOT's project, and so you don't want to take on any responsibility. You've done what you can in terms of trying to address it. They've been out, I think, didn't they make a slight adjustment?
Very slight.
Very slight adjustment, but, so you don't have to accept it. You're just deciding not to take further action.
Do we need any kind of motion, anything, or just...
No, that was an information report, so...
All right, thank you, Dennis.
That's it, thank you.
The next thing is number 12, the attorney report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, probably in the distant past, when there was turnover on the council, we did a short kind of session on legal compliance issues, open meeting, conflict of interest, kind of making the record, those types of things. If you think that would be helpful, we could slot it into one of your workshops. It probably wouldn't be more than an hour, so you could, you know, do that for an hour and still have time to take on other business. I know you have a number of opportunities in that regard, but the nice thing is, this is kind of a condensed version of that, so you get much of what you get in longer sessions in an hour, and I would have some materials for you. So you can, you know, decide to do that at some point in the future, or we'll leave it up to you.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council's report. Danny, have you anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing.
I have to report that the Sunrise River was supposed to have a meeting of the watershed district, and they have had to cancel it for weather, and they have rescheduled that. The other thing I would like to bring up is, because we've had this discussion about the roads, and I understand this is a reclamation that we're talking about, but I have been talking with the citizens of Columbus, and a lot of people are concerned about paving roads that are gravel. And in the past, we've had different thresholds of what people need to, how many people need to want to have a road paved. And currently, I think it stands at 51%. And talking to a lot of people in Columbus, they weren't satisfied with that, and they would like to see that higher. So I would like to discuss that as far as if someone wants, if somebody in the neighborhood suggests that they want to have their road paved, what do we feel the percentages should be? I will share mine first, and I was from an area that did not want their roads paved for a long time. It became necessary because of the way that the area, you know, grew, and I understood that. But I believe that 75% is a lot more fair than the 51%, so... Is there any ideas on the council as far as changing anything at this point?
See, it's been all over the place. It's been 100% at one time, 75%.
I would leave it the way it is, because I've been on the council, and I fought harder to get it to 51%, so we get the roads blacktop. In my future, in my understanding, it's cheaper to have a road blacktop. Anybody that doesn't have a road blacktop, eventually, when they do get a blacktop, all the people that we've done here, they always say, why didn't we do it before? Nobody says, you shouldn't have done it. It's a good thing for the city, and it brings the city into the future. So I'd like to leave it at 51%.
Danny was a big pusher of paving the roads. I'm not a big pusher of paving the roads. I like the higher percentage.
Mr. Mayor and council members, if I could just comment for clarity, the 51% is advisory to you. So you ultimately have discretion to order a project or not order a project. The only thing that's in statute is there is a 35% number. If you don't reach 35% of owners, then you have to have a four-fifth vote. So that's, so sometimes there's a misunderstanding, certainly by, sometimes by property owners, that that is a legal requirement. It's a policy requirement, and it's guidance to you as a council on whether there's support for a project or not. So I just wanted to put that in the mix as well. So it's not a hard rule. It's guidance to you that past councils have adopted as part of their road policy.
So would we have to adopt a different, I mean, would we have to make that stipulation, or would we just leave it at the 34 or 35%?
The 35% is just when you need to get a supermajority vote to go from three-fifths to a four-fifth vote. So if you have at least 35% of the owners, I think, in front foot, front footage, then you can do a simple majority vote, three out of five. If you go beyond that under state law, you, or if you don't reach that, you need four-fifths. And then in the policy, the 50% or the 51% is really guidance to you. So you could say, if there was... So you could say, if there was 49%, we really think this road needs to be approved and it wouldn't, it wouldn't prevent you from doing that because it's policy. By the same token, you know, you could say, no, I'd much rather, because of the concerns in the neighborhood, I'd much rather have, you know, more than 50%. This is just to give you guidance that there, that there is at least a simple majority of landowners that are willing to accept the special assessment. You always have authority as council to order that project regardless, for safety reasons, for whatever reason you, you know, whatever rationale you put into the, into the mix.
The policy that you're referring to, that Bill is referring to, is a longstanding policy and process and procedure that the city of Columbus has instituted. And most cities do not have what they call a neighborhood meeting concept step in their process. Chapter 429, which is the process where you can specially assess a property, does not require it. And so there is a flyer that we put together indicating, because this is a longstanding process, this is before, the process was even developed before my time, where if a proprietor goes out and knocks on doors and gets a petition, comes back to the council and says, I have X amount of percent of people interested in paving my road, will you hold a neighborhood meeting? And the neighborhood meeting was simply so that everyone in the neighborhood got information. It wasn't that you were for a project or you were against the project. It was an opportunity that each of the proprietors got the information and an estimate from the engineer on how much it was going to cost to pave the road. So it was carved out so that we didn't go through this whole process, get to the public hearing and find out there was only two out of 20 people who wanted the project. So it has worked well because I think the neighborhood gets a lot of information, we get a lot of information back. I think in that meeting, we do take, we take a vote. And I think there's a lot of people who put a lot of credence in that vote because they call us and want to know how close we are. So whether it's 51% or 60% or 75% or was even 100% at one time, they, they rely on that and their expectations is because it's your policy that you're going to follow it. And I realize it's guidance, but the expectation from constituency is that you're going to abide by that. And they feel very married to that policy. So I do think it is something that we're asked and it is important to them as to what percentage it is because, as I said, they call us and how close are we? And it depends on whether you're on the yes side or the no side as to what they're looking Once we get that percentage, really, that vote, all that vote really does is ask, it's brought back to the council to see really what interest is in. And then we go to the next step and the next step is sending out formal petitions. And it's not till the formal positions, petitions are sent out that people sign on the line saying, yes, I'm interested in this project. And that's still part of the neighborhood meeting so that, again, it's not even the chapter 429 process. So when you hear people say, well, they sent out petitions, those are the more formal ones because the vote that we took on scraps of paper and put in a basket is just at the neighborhood meeting and it's just get a temperature whether we should send out formal petitions. So we have a very large process before we even start the 429 process. But I will say, whatever policy you set, people are banking on that and that, and that's the rule. And I've been challenged on that saying, and I've told people that it's just guidance and oh, here we go. You know what I mean? You just can't give me a straight answer. I asked you a question and you wouldn't give me a straight answer. And so it's, it is quite difficult at times to tell them that, well, here's guidance and, but they can change their mind because people don't want to hear that. They want to, they want to know what the answer is, for what it's worth.
I think it's worth readdressing the, the policy or the question and see if we come up with the same answer. I mean, I, I get what you're saying, Denny, about, about the, you know, it's easier and less expensive to maintain paved roads, but what I understand is that it kind of depends on how much traffic that road has. So if it's a road that has a ton of traffic, it's probably more expensive to keep it as gravel. And if it's a road that doesn't have a lot of traffic, it may be more expensive to have it be paved. So I don't think it's a one size fits all. And I think that when people move in, the road is gravel or it's not, it doesn't revert back from, from paved to gravel. It always goes in the other direction. So you're, and it's a sizable amount of dollars to ask people to, to pay. So I just think it's worth asking the question again and seeing, seeing what the answer is.
I also feel that if we, if we really want to keep the rural nature in Columbus, that is more important even than a five acre rural. I mean, that's what everybody quotes is, that's why Columbus is rural. But having dirt roads and being, and people having, you know, lower traffic and, you know, not, not wanting to, they want to live in the country. And that's what people told me when I was, you know, talking with them. So I just think we should revisit that, that whole policy.
Shelley, would you be comfortable if we put this on a workshop and really?
I'm, I'm wondering if it would be.
More information from everybody?
Well, I, I'm wondering if it would be better to, you know, turn it over to, you know, the Public Works Advisory Board and let them kind of hash it out. They've been doing.
They'll come back with a recommendation to pave all the roads. That's the recommendation.
Well.
They talked about hash it over numerous times. I personally find it hard to believe that paved roads are cheaper than gravel roads. We put 600,000 away each year for, for our asphalt plan. We put 50,000 away for gravel. I don't know. They're about 50/50 right now, 50 paved, 50% gravel?
It's 50/50.
But that's, that's averaging it out over the whole city. I think you're, you're talking about specific roads. It's going to vary. I mean, I live in the same area as Shelley and so when it came time to actually vote on this, there had been a development that came in that grossly increased the traffic on that road. And the city was out there, if they didn't grade it every three days, it was ridiculous. You'd bounce right off the road. And it's a long stretch. So in that case, it probably was, in the long run, less expensive to pave the road than to be maintaining it. If you're on a little short dead end road, then it's probably not. So I, but I just think it's, it is something I heard also, door knocking, and so I think it's worth asking the question. I don't know if it's the public words advisory or how you get the feedback, but seems like a reasonable place to start.
We got their feedback. They've done his studies and they come back with recommend doing all the roads. That was a recommendation. Are you wrong? What was the recommendation then? Nope. Here it comes.
Might as well take a seat.
The, the direction from the council was to come up with a paving plan, so that's, that's why they came up with the plan that they came up with. You know, that the city would initiate the petition process. But, I mean, I can very easily go back there and tell them to look, because we've all talked that we're not doing that process anymore because it wasn't successful. So that's off the table. So now we're going back to resident petition like it has been for 50 years. I don't, I don't know, a long time. So, so anyways, I can go back and ask them about a percentage and see what they say. I, I don't, I don't know where they'll come up, but.
What exactly are we looking for?
A recommendation to change our.
As a percentage?
Excuse me?
A recommendation for a percentage?
Right.
Of approval?
Right. Something 51% or more, you know, but.
Jim, I don't think the Public Works Advisory Board has come back to the council to revise the, the policy. So I don't think it formally, I think, I think we talked about it with the last council, but I don't think any formal action has been taken for the, for the, for the blacktop policy of the every other year plan and such. I don't know whether that.
I thought the council exceded the plan. I know I haven't told the Public Works Advisory Committee because we haven't had a meeting, but I'm 99% certain that the council said that we were done.
I think we did because we're getting no responses, not enough sponsors.
It was expensive, yeah.
I mean, we did it twice and we, we got zero out of it, so we deemed that it's just not worth, not worth doing. So I, I don't, I guess I don't recollect if they made a motion, but that was the direction I got out of.
Oh, we did.
That we were going to be done. Okay.
But possibly we could have that, that updated and then say something about the percentages?
I'm trying to think.
They have to.
So we wrote a policy, so the policy was voted out now, so now there's not a policy anymore. Correct? Is that how that would work?
There's still a policy. The, the change in the policy was the council was identifying areas that, where petitions could be circulated. And so we would fall back to the, the policy that contains the 51% vote, right?
I think, because I think the 51% vote was with the every other year paving program. So I think what we need to do then is.
I was just going to say, I think it's in that policy.
I think what we need to do as the advisory board is maybe come up with a new policy that would supersede the old policy. That work?
Right. I think that's, that's correct. I, I thought the, the original 51% policy was a separate action from the paving plan, which the council did adopt.
I think it spelled it out as 51% in the every other year paving five mile plan.
Clearly, it's, it's worth looking at the record when the council took the action, what action they took specifically, whether that action aggregated the prior policy or simply just went back to a petition-driven process. So I think we can, the staff put together that packet of information.
So then, what we would be looking for now would be something saying that we're going back to the original policy, resident-driven, and then a percentage.
Looking for some type of percentage, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Do we need a motion to direct staff to do that?
I think it would be helpful just because then it's a clear direction rather than kind of a consensus direction.
I make a motion that the Public Works Advisory Board give us some information back on updating the, what we thought was part of the policy and to give us a percentage of the residents that want a paved road or not.
Okay, so just, just as, well, go ahead, do that and then as discussion, I'll ask a couple more questions.
Second. End discussion.
Okay, so, so what we're looking for is a percentage and that we basically want to go back to the original resident-driven policy.
Is this written? This is in writing, right? To?
I, I don't know that. I, I don't know that, I know that the up to five mile policy at the 51% is written because we did that. I don't know if there's another one, so that's why I'm saying.
Right. It might have to.
If there isn't one, we'll write one.
There is. That's why I suggested we look back at the record because I remember spending a great deal of time on a multi-page policy and I think it'd be just helpful to pull that packet for the council.
Okay.
Including the motion that reversed the action, so we can kind of see exactly what the prior council did.
Okay.
All right, everybody clear? Let's call for a vote.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Okay, Jim, you can stay right there here now.
All right.
Don't move. Number 14, everybody, Public Works report.
Uh, no report.
All right.
No more report. Let's do that.
Snow keeping you busy, it seems like?
Snow is keeping us very busy, so hopefully.
Good job, by the way.
Thank you. Hopefully, the rest of February is quiet.
Maybe.
Maybe.
No, I heard it's not.
Right now, we're at the, I think the force snowy is February, my record, so.
Number 15 is the Public Information Coordinator, Coordinator report. Jessica?
Yeah, I have a report tonight. So if you would look in your handouts today, I did print you all out a copy of ordinance number 1503. So the reason I printed this out for you guys is because I'm getting a number of complaints about the lighting ordinance in the city. And it's really boiling down to different interpretations of the lighting ordinance and what the intention behind the lighting ordinance is. So I know that you, you just got this tonight. My request to you is maybe to read it over, think about how you interpret it should be enforced, and maybe we can discuss that at our next meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to field them. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds of the complaints and the specificity of them, but it really does kind of come down to the ordinance.
So you would like us to read it through, think it through, and decide what we, what it means, what we think that it means?
Yeah, and what kind of your take in general to what the lighting policy should be for the city since we have a new, a newish council?
Yeah.
Kind of revisit that idea. In particular, the first section, actually, now, down 7A-813, on the second page, that's the one that's giving me a little trouble. So again, I don't expect something back right now, but something to think about and how that can be enforced.
And then we'll discuss it on the next meeting.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
Can we ask, just, is this a, is this a commercial versus residential thing or is this residential?
I've gotten both. I've gotten both over the years, but right now, it's a residential issue.
One other thing, Jessie, I would like is if we can have our attorney weigh in on one thing that is not in here. When we adopted this ordinance in 2015, we looked at outdoor lighting and whether it was in a business neighborhood or whether it was in a residential neighborhood. And one thing, if you look at Article 2 definitions, while there's definitions on lighting fixtures, there is not a definition on glare. And while we quantify what light is and when we quantify what would not be in compliance is exceeding one foot candle, I think one of the questions we have is, is the one foot candle the measurement of both glare and light? Or is there a different measurement and/or definition in this particular ordinance in the measurement? Because the, the language here says direct glare or light. And if it's an or, is the what foot candle the measurement of either one of those? And if the, you know what I mean? And so there is going to have to be some interpretation on, on how that's administered because for a zoning administrator or Jessie and I to do compliance, you have to have a measurement of compliance. It's not, it can't just be gray. It has to say, okay, if this is the rule and if you walk over this line, you're not in compliance. And so I think that's our question in this particular section. And what was, you know, whatever the original intent was, I, I think we can look at that if it's necessary. But our, our question today is, what is the measurement of non-compliance at this point? And, and if it, if the one foot candle is not the measurement of glare, what is it and what's the definition? Because there is no definition to it. And we can look at the ordinary definition, but.
Glare is generally interpreted in the lighting world as unshielded light, where you can, you know, generally, you can shield light, you can downcast it, you can direct light. When it's undirected, it's usually understood to be glare because it's undirected. But we can certainly look at definitions. I'm not sure why that wasn't defined in this, this go around, but that's simply, something that most, most cities have a definition of glare. Generally, the approach in Columbus has been to be a little more flexible because people have large lots, because they have outbuildings. And so I don't know, maybe there was a definition of glare and it got knocked out, but we can certainly take a look at that. We generally agree that to enforce a code, it should be a measurable standard, not a subjective standard. And so I'm not sure why there's not a definition here.
And while we're on that, if the, if the definition is indirect glare, then there probably isn't a measurement. And if there isn't a measurement, maybe it should be taken out.
Yeah, unshielded light is pretty easy to, to see because it's not, it's not downcast or directed. And so it's just, it's going to broadcast in all directions. So that, that would be observable, you know, if, if somebody's got unshielded light at a property line. But I, you know, I think it's certainly worth looking at the definition. Mr.?
Certainly come to the magic mic and state your name and address. And I have a question though before you. Sorry. Mr. Counselor, so then you don't measure glare by the lumen, one lumen foot at the pony lane or what?
This, yeah, this either or is, is two measurements. One is observing glare as kind of unshielded light and, and it's, it's a nuisance characteristic if it's too close to your neighbor, or there is light exceeding one foot candle. So that's a. So that's a, it's two different standards. It's glare or measuring the foot candle. Obviously, measuring the foot candle is easier to do than, than making a subjective call on whether somebody's unshielded light is creating a nuisance.
And the code actually says, or the ordinance speaks of direct glare, and not just glare, which in lighting, you do have direct and indirect glare. So, I mean, you need to understand the terminology, the way it's used, and really, with the direct glare in the ordinance, it makes sense, if you know lighting. You get indirect glare when you get reflection off of a house or something, or some backlighting, which is different, and that's pretty hard to eliminate totally. But as far as direct glare, looking at a fixture and seeing that lamp, that is, that can be offensive, and that is direct glare. So, I mean, I just, I think if you're going to look at it, you need to look at it knowing lighting. Please. The question I really have is the first part of the ordinance, and the grandfathered in, and how that is interpreted by the city. Because the ordinance went into effect in 2015, of October 21st or something. Besides the definition and adding to the definitions, I think this is an important part, because if it, if a fixture was up before that ordinance went into effect, and the wording in your ordinance, that would be grandfathered in. Am I incorrect on that? That's something I want looked at.
Just, Mr.. Mayor and Council, if you'd like me to address the question. Generally, in land use or zoning matters, there's protection for noncompliance that predates the ordinance, that was legal as of the date of the ordinance. However, when you're looking at technical lighting standards, you know, when, when bulbs are replaced, when lighting is replaced, it has to meet the standard. It can't, you can't just simply replace it with the same or similar.
Correct.
Some ordinances, you know, some cities have ordinances on lighting that go, you know, 10 pages of very, very technical specifications. Obviously, this is a much simpler approach, and probably was the city's first foray into the subject of regulating lighting, because we're largely rural. But the, the grandfathering of a fixture is not the same as grandfathering a land use. So, you know-
But if you have not changed a lamp or anything, and you have not, because how does it read?
Newly installed, changing-
Right. So the idea would be, when you go to replace that fixture, you would then replace it with a complying-
Correct. But if you have not replaced it, and it's pre, it was installed before the ordinance was changed or enacted, and you haven't replaced it, is it grandfathered in?
You can continue to use it. Now, again, there's, there's this lighting ordinance, and then we have separate nuisance provisions of the code. And so if something is keeping someone up at night, they could, you know, they could certainly make a claim that that's nuisance, and then we'd have to investigate it as a city and decide if it is in fact nuisance. But that was a discussion that the council had, because I recall that discussion, that we're not going to run around the city to make everybody change out their fixtures. So that's why the language is newly installed. But, but again, I think there's some, some areas that are coming up, obviously, on a complaint-driven process. In addition, Elizabeth has asked us to look at that definition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question to the attorney. What if the property was sold, and the new owner was there, say they had an outdoor light, like the street corner light, broadcast, wasn't shielded? Would that be in effect with this rule, or not?
I wouldn't think so. Again, it would be the newly installed, so you could sell your property and not have to come into compliance. It's not like some of the other codes that are state-driven codes, building codes and others, where they can require you to come into compliance after a time. This is a, this is part of our zoning code, and the zoning, the nonconforming use statute under zoning comes from the state and gives protection for pre-existing uses. To a point.
So you'll bring us more information? Elizabeth?
Yes.
At the next meeting. All right, Jessica, have you got anything more?
No, thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right. All right, now we'll move to number 16, the City Administrator's Report. We have a handle, I think, for that?
I have a couple of items on my report here. The first is in your additions. The city has been working on a, on a project in conjunction with Trunk Highway, I'm sorry, with the bridge project. And in that big, larger project, our project, or our part of the project, is relocation, relocating Hornsby Street. And as we moved along with that project, we had several people testify and indicate that they felt it was very important that we have a traffic light at the corner of Trunk Highway 97 and Hornsby Street, and they felt that it was, at the time, it was not in the project. And so, the previous council then decided to have the feasibility study done to see if we met warrants for a traffic light. And when that report was done, as a result of future development, it met warrants, and so MINDOT agreed that the traffic light could go with this project. But with that, MINDOT also indicated that it was a design-build project, and their project limits were, was going to be at Hornsby Street. And in fact, if we wanted to put in the extra lane that the traffic light required, that it would have to be included in the Hornsby Street project, which we agreed to do, and at our workshop, it was outlined that the MINDOT project stopped at the, at the intersection, and that we would be taking on some of the improvements on Trunk Highway 97. Looking at that project, and with the additional lane, we do need additional right-of-way. And it's, it's our good fortune that the DNR owns both sides of that roadway and the property adjoining our roadway. So we have contacted the area manager, who is Scott Nolan, and he's with Lamprey Pass. And we've also contacted the DNR Lands and Minerals Department. And we've looked at the application, and the application has several requirements, one of which you meet with the area wildlife manager, which we've done, also talk with the land and minerals representative, and we've, we've done that, her name is Martha Vickery. We went over the application materials, and we think we have a good handle on the application. But one of the things that is required is a resolution. And so what you have before you in your additions is a resolution approving the application for the acquisition of an easement from the DNR associated with the lands needed for the lane expansion on Trunk Highway 97. It's approximately half acre, and it's a $2,000 application fee, which was not waived. We are required to give them the $2,000, which is not refundable, whether you get the easement or not. And in addition to that, Martha reminded us that we would have to pay for the easement. So there isn't a forgiveness or program that because this is a highway project, that somehow we don't have to pay for it, we will have to pay for the easement. So, with that, the resolution is before you, so that we can move forward with the process in order to acquire the easement, in order to do the improvement project on Trunk Highway 97, which is the additional lane, the additional lane acreage needed in order to make the additional lane.
What is the number of the resolution?
1902.
Would someone like to make the motion, please?
I can motion, we accept resolution number 1902, on page A1.
And is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions or discussion?
Is the $2,000 all that we are responsible for, or are we repaying?
The $2,000 is the application fee.
Right.
And then, once the application goes through the process, there's several, there's several different offices that the application has to go through, and if there are federal dollars that were associated in the original purchase of the land for the wildlife management area, it will have to go through some federal offices also. So we're hoping not, and that we have, we're on the fast-track process. But she also reminded us that DNR property has to be paid for. So before they will issue the easement to us, we will have to pay the fair market value of the half acre of property.
And they have any amount in mind?
Well-
She didn't, she didn't give us the amount.
We can give you an idea, because we've worked on similar issues with MINDOT on this project. Generally, you'd be probably in a dollar to a $1.50 range of value for conservation land. It wouldn't be like commercial values at, at $4 or $5 a foot. So if you're looking at a half an acre, you're probably in the $20,000 to $25,000 range. The, the good news about this whole process is if we can satisfy this requirement, and the city's really taking the lead on behalf of other agencies, that all the rest of the funding is in place for the, the road project. So getting the extra lane, getting the semi fours, you know, the intersection signalized is all being funded through other grants and processes. But if, if we, as a city, don't step up and do this, then we will be at a single lane, is that correct?
Basically, what's out there, yeah, now.
Yep.
East of the intersection.
So we won't have the enhanced intersection, and we'll have the semi four, but we won't have sufficient lane capacity. And now I'm in, in the engineer's business, so I'll let him-
I was also going to say, I don't, haven't completely vetted the process that, like you said, we're doing this on behalf of MINDOT, and this will be right-of-way or easements we're acquiring, and then relinquishing to them. So I don't know if this can be part of the project cost, or, or not.
So we would seek to have the, the acquisition of the acreage covered as a project cost. That would be our first move, so it's not coming out of the city general fund. But the, the lane improvements are far, far and away the big cost, and the semi four, the signalized intersection is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost, and that's all covered through other funding sources.
All right. Anybody else? If not, let's call for a vote. It's been moved and seconded for resolution number 1902. Danny?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna, I'm going to take my report out of order, because I have a short PowerPoint presentation for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So I'm going to do the others, and we'll end with that. Looking at the schedule for city council workshops, it was brought my, to my attention that your workshop schedule wasn't brought before you, before publication, so that all the meetings would be publicized. And so what you have before you on page 38 is the schedule of workshop meetings. The only item I had on here with some question was whether or not you wanted to have an additional workshop, and that was at the request of the developers that wanted to seek information from you sooner than later. However, that week, our engineer is not available, and it is important that he's there for the developers, because they are going to have engineering questions that I think you're going to want some information from him. So, in that regard, I would cross off February 20th, and it would just be, it would start with February 6th, and years after, we'll have a January meeting. So in this particular case, there'll be a space on top for the, for a January meeting. So at this time, I would need a motion to accept this schedule, so that I can publish it.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from anyone? Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 The next item I have is, I have included the organizational meeting chart in your agenda materials, as there's a couple of items that have been discussed at the last meeting, and one item that was not discussed, but I need clarification on. On page 39, we, we appointed a depository of Wells Fargo Bank. And the previous council, when we talked about investments, indicated that we would move, perhaps we would move away from Wells Fargo and use US Bank, and in that vein, made a motion to indicate that we would move our investments to US Bank. My recommendation is if we're going to stay with our depository on Wells Fargo, that we stay with, investing with Wells Fargo, as it makes it a little bit easier on financial staff to track the funds, and being able to move the money from one account to the other. So my recommendation is then to designate Wells Fargo as the bank we use for investments, and if you would like to talk to the group that will invest our money, I can certainly have them come to a council meeting. We've met with them, because Wells Fargo has a new policy. It used to be that I had a broker that worked downtown, and, and they did investing at my direction, and they've moved away from that, where we actually have an investor group, and they work as a team, and we've met with them early last year. And the reason why that happened is Wells Fargo, two or three years ago, they did not have a local government section that just looked over local government. We were grouped in with the business, or treated as a business, and so the bankers weren't always familiar with all the government rules. Well, now they actually have a government section who are way familiar, or very familiar with the rules, and so it's much easier to work with them, because they know all the guidelines. And so now they've actually designated a group that invests for government entities. So, few changes in there.
So would someone like to make the motion to, to keep Wells Fargo, or to return to them?
Return to that, return to Wells Fargo.
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Someone second?
Second.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded. Anybody have any discussion? If not-
I just, I just have a question. Elizabeth, there's not any risk in terms of, like, getting over the FDIC limit by having it in the same bank?
All of our investments, our FDIC are backed, where we only invest a certain amount of money with an individual investor. So there's, it's collateralized at all levels, with the exception of a money market, which I do, do not keep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Not called for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
In looking at page 40 at our last meeting, the Park Advisory Board made a report to the city council, and asked that they appoint a park board liaison, in addition to them coming before you and giving you a report. So I've also highlighted that for you to designate a person who would be a liaison, and then an alternate, in case they were not able to attend.
What action do you need?
You need to appoint a liaison to the park board, along with an alternate.
Janet, you said you would be the-
I'd be happy to do it, if nobody else is-
As the alternate, or the liaison, or the primary?
Either. I can be the primary or the, or the alternate.
Who else would like to be the alternate representative?
I could be the alternate.
Yeah. So I'd like a motion, please, appointing Janet as the primary, and Denny as the alternate representative to the park board, which has three meetings left this year.
So moved.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. And, Elizabeth, I have one question on the same page, please.
Okay.
Down at the Fall Fest Council Representative. I think there was a little bit of issue. Shelley is the primary representative, and Janet was the alternate, and Denny is in charge of the car show, correct?
Yeah.
So if we have all three of them there, there's a problem of not having a posted meeting, or whatever. How do we, so, we have two or three volunteers, for one thing, it's amazing, we don't want to discourage anybody. So what do we do, so that they don't have to show up and not attend a meeting? Can we just post these, or, or what's the answer?
So these meetings can be posted, just as we've posted the workshop meeting. And, and this was brought to my attention two or three weeks ago, when we had the first meeting, and I asked Lori about, can I have a schedule? You know what I mean? Because then I figured, okay, we can have the same type of schedule, and she indicated to me that they did not. That they, at the meeting that they attend, then they decide on the following meeting. So there isn't- So there isn't a published schedule of meetings for the year. So what that does is, we would have to call them special meetings because there's no, you know what I mean, there's no schedule. So we would have to post them, each one of them, as a special meeting for three of you to attend Fall Fest, unless they come up with a schedule, where then I can publish the whole schedule, and it could be put on the website.
So how do you publish it? Just on the website? And do you have to put it in the paper too, each time? Or just, is the website sufficient?
You know, I'm required, you know, I'm required to post the meetings, and you're, and there are certain meetings that you would, you know, publish if, you know, you can. Not all meetings are required to be published. We've always published a scheduled meeting to put the public on notice that we're meeting. And in this particular case, right now, there's not a schedule of meetings. So I would have to, each time they made a meeting, we would have to post a special notice if they don't come up with a schedule.
But that's on the website and also on the board, right?
It would be, yes. And then if you directed me to publish it, I would. Otherwise, I'm not required to publish it.
I don't think the Fall Fest warrants publication. So let's run it that way, I guess, for now. If you'll please publish it, or do we have to have a motion?
That should be a council motion. And that would also allow you, any council member then could show up, all five of you if you wanted to.
All right. So would someone make a motion, please?
So moved. To publish the Fall Fest meeting on the website and on the board.
Is there a second? And any more discussion?
I'm glad that we got so many people's interest in Fall Fest.
I only want to go because you're going to be there.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. What else, Elizabeth, the hazardous mitigation plan?
So I'm going to, I'm going to do, I realize the PowerPoint shows that this is the 2012 Hazard Mitigation Plan. It has not changed, so I figured I would take you through a couple of slides, because this is something new for this council. And this has to do with emergency management. So afterwards, I will, I'll pass out the resolution that we, I've been through two hazard mitigation plans now with the community. And we'll walk through a little bit of the background first, and then I'll walk you through the resolution and what our next steps are. So every five years, we have to do a mitigation plan. And so, looking overall at emergency management, there's four phases of emergency management. There's preparedness, there's response, recovery, and mitigation. And this plan is really about mitigation. I won't talk about the others, because the others, it'll take way too much time. But at one point, we will have an elected official's liaison, and it'll talk about preparedness and response, and what your roles are should the city ever have an emergency, and what we need to do in order to go through that process. In this case, again, there's the four different areas for emergency management. And mitigation is defined as an action that you're going to take to reduce or eliminate long-term risk in our community. So it is a plan that is specifically for our community from a hazard event. In looking at the mitigation in 2000, when, I think this is, that's when it was first instituted, under the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, this is when it all came to fruition, where we had to have this FEMA plan in order to guide aid. So this all comes back for federal dollars. As to if you have an emergency, if you meet a certain threshold of damage to public facilities, then you're able to claim aid or dollars in order to rebuild. So the emergencies we've already had in the city, whether it was the two tornadoes and such, never met that threshold, so we were not eligible for any federal aid, even though we may have had emergencies or called for emergencies. And in our city, we had the two tornadoes last year, or was it the year before?
Year before.
The year before. And prior to that, we had two wildland fires, where Carlos Avery, there was those. And so we've had emergencies in the city before. We've not had to set up, as far as the city goes, we have not had to set up command because it was either fire or police that took over command. But we had a part in that, they informed us of what was going on, but we didn't have a direct part in the actual boots-on-ground. So why are we updating the plan? It basically costs too much to do it on your own. And so the reason why we would want to do it with Anoka County is for cost purposes. But overall, the state and federal aid is usually insufficient to cover some of the economic damages. So we always want to have the ability, if the damages are cost too much, that we would be able to go to the federal government. And you'd be surprised, I know Jim, in our two tornadoes that we had, just in the ditches alone, I think Jim said it was 150 to 200 trees that we removed from the road ditch. So I realize that we didn't, that's what we had, we had tree damage. But at any given time, it could have been in the freeway district, and we could have had well damage, or tower damage, or those sorts of things. And then we would have had thousands of dollars of damage to public infrastructure. And then we might have met some of those thresholds. So the idea of the mitigation plan is that you look at, you look at your hazards, you put the plan in place. If you exceed a given figure in damage, then you're able to file with FEMA and get aid to reimburse you for your cost. The plan, again, has to be updated every five years from the time of adoption. And again, in order to be eligible for disaster assistance, you do have to be in compliance with FEMA, and also, I'm not going to be good with acronyms, but HSEM, it will come to me, but, and I will get that, because, Homeland Security and Emergency Management, there you go. Anoka County is preparing this update with the collaboration of cities and townships, also watershed districts and locations. And what happens is, Anoka County has a team of emergency management specialists. They then get assigned to certain cities. And so you have a lead person that helps you write your plan. Then your plan is put together with everyone else's plan. They then take it to FEMA and submit it. Then it's approved by FEMA. When it's approved by FEMA, it comes back to you, and then you adopt it as your plan over the next five years. The plan itself, for us, will identify between three and five hazards. And the idea is, when you identify that hazard, you put together a mitigation plan on how you're going to mitigate that. And over those five years, you implement that plan, and then you look at, there's a scoring system, and you look at, after you've implemented this mitigation plan, whether you thought you were successful or not. So in this new plan, we'll look at the previous plan we did five years to see whether we were successful in mitigating what we thought our hazards were. And they could be, they can still be hazards, but then you take that and you go further in mitigation. So, and I'm not an expert, I'm not an expert in emergency management. I've had a little bit of training, let's say, in order to manage the paperwork. But again, I'm not an emergency manager, so it's good that we can look to Anoka County for guidance. And then they help us with the plan, along with our fire chief, who will also give us information on his perspective from the fire, from a fire perspective, so. So you can tell, I did not put the slideshow together, but I can take you through some of the hazards. In this case, they list the hazards in Columbus in the last five years. Ours have been wildfires, tornadoes, and severe thunderstorms. We've had severe winter weather. On a very small level, we would, it was hazard materials and chemicals. And this had to do with, we have a freeway going through the city, and the scenario was, is what would happen if you had a hazardous chemical truck have a very big accident on I-35? And somehow the chemicals, you know what I mean, or chemical cloud came into Columbus. You know, what would you, what would you do? And the reason why this particular item came up was because you have our biggest employer adjacent to the freeway. And so how would you, how would you get people in and out when you only have one roadway? How would you expedite that? And so certain things that you look at, and that's part of your mitigation plan, how would you do that? So the idea is, you've already talked about this, you've done a tabletop, and you know what the first six steps are going to be if you have something like that happen. Other ones, we really don't touch Columbus, you know, earthquakes, and maybe we'll have a heat wave someday after our, just the opposite, maybe the polar vortex could be one of our hazards this time around. But again, it's an opportunity for us to all talk about what we think are hazards in There have been, every time we have damage or property damage to public infrastructure, it's logged. And over the years, different cities have looked at different things that have happened. And as you can see, some of the numbers are quite large, looking at tornado damage. The goals of a mitigation plan is basically for cooperation and collaboration between all agencies and organizations in Anoka County. Again, identifying and evaluating hazards and risk, reducing the disaster impacts to the community, and creating awareness in a safer community. And it ensures compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. In this case, our draft upplay, it's not in '12, that was the last one that we did. And this, I think they want to see that the draft is done. I think they're being a little optimistic, but it might be in March of this year, and then the final plan would be in November. And that's historically, it is, in the spring, you do all of the analysis, and then you submit your plan in November, and then it's adopted by the end of the year. And as each year, Anoka County, they encourage all of us to work together, in other words, all of the communities in Anoka to work together on this all hazard mitigation planning. And in this particular case, they're asking us to sign the statement of interest in this planning. And if we do not participate, we would not be able, we would not be eligible for any FEMA funding, for disaster funds. So what you have in your agenda packet is the statement of interest that if we, in order for us to move forward, we would have to adopt that statement of interest to be included in that program.
And so would someone like to make a motion, please?
I move to adopt the statement of interest in all hazard mitigation planning with Anoka County for the City of Columbus.
And a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on it, or any discussion?
Is there anyone in particular that wants to work with me on this? Or is it something that you want to, me to bring back the information so you can all discuss the process? How do you want to approach the update?
Mr. Mayor, I would just point out to the mayor and council that the mayor has, is one of five members on the council, so for the most part, your role is identical. The two distinctions are, you convene the meeting, and you actually are called upon in the case of an emergency. So that's by statute. Otherwise, your role is largely the same as every other council member. So I just point that out as a matter of state law. I don't know that it means that the mayor has to be involved, but if you want to be involved, there'd be good reason, because of your statutory requirement to be called upon in the case of an emergency.
All right.
And there could be two of you, I mean, it just really, it's really what, it's really who wants to be involved.
I'll do it, Elizabeth.
Okay.
Anybody else?
No. You done the plan five years ago, is that when you did it?
I did the one in 2007 and the one in '13, yeah.
Couldn't have any trouble, you don't think?
You know, it's generally pretty straightforward, but it is, it's, the plan is tailored, you know what I mean, tailored for Columbus. So all of the questions, you know what I mean, it's not like check this box. You actually have to look at Columbus and that, you know what I mean, those mappings and such. So I think at a certain point, we'll bring the plan, but you, along the way, you can't bring every chapter, because it just doesn't, it's all time, it's too time-consuming to do it that way. So whoever works on it, you work at it in chunks in a time with a representative from Anoka County, who's trained in emergency management, so they can give you tips and things that are good to do, and a bar to look at how you're going to measure your success. And then you, and we can bring it back in chunks, but you wouldn't be able to do it individually, it would take too much time.
And you send it out, so we know what we'd be signing up for?
Sure. We could easily do that, if everyone monitors their email, and then we can say, this is, you know, this is what we're thinking, you know what I mean, what do you think, kind of thing? And then at the end...
I think you need some help. I can train in that kind of stuff.
Okay. Great. No, I think that would be good.
So we have a motion and a second. Let's call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
That concludes my report.
Would you like to do the announcements and reminders? Elizabeth, please.
Yes. And the City Council Workshop, the next City Council Workshop on March 6th, it will be from 4:00 to 6:00. And at this point, we will have two developer presentations, and we'll keep those to 30 minutes apiece. And then we will talk about the Met Council letter. In the meantime, I will let Hyla know that she will move forward with the more technical things, and that we will just, we'll have a short discussion on the policy issues on the incomplete letter. The Planning Commission meeting is, the one that we just had, it was on 2/6. It really is on 2/20, which is the next meeting. There's two applications on that meeting, along with two public hearings. And they're both for residential zone businesses. And we'll walk through that with the Planning Commission members and the new checklist. So it's a good run-through for that checklist. The Local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting, we did hear back from the county, and it has been scheduled for April 23rd at 7:00 PM. You have your calendar of meetings before you. If there's any questions on the meetings, just let me know.
Any questions, anyone? And then, if not, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Motion and a second.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Jesse did.
I asked for one.
Okay. I'll take the motion.
You'll second it. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.